Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Did you guys have us present it?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
We're here.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
Yes, comfortable.
Also, we're trying to keep, before we go on, we're trying to keep. Need short. We have to do what we do it, but, you know. We need to approve the minutes of four, the hearing on the sixth, meeting of the 14th, 18th, oh my God, we'll get all these things here.
Hearing and meeting.
Yes, hearing and meeting.
Meeting on the 14th, then the 18th and the 25th.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so, how do you want, you want to do?
One at a time.
One at a time?
One at a time, there's just way too many.
Okay, so, number four.
I've got, on the fourth, I've got four corrections.
Do the check from up there. Sorry. I don't have the full check. I got two sixes.
Okay.
I got, well, you should have two sixes.
Well, there are two sixes.
Once a meeting, once a hearing.
Wait, wait, what may I do? Hey, sorry, Barry, I got it.
The meeting of the fourth.
Okay, do we have any, motion to? Do we have any additions or corrections?
Yeah, I, I have four.
In the minutes. Okay.
So, under paragraph five, highway report, first line is fire alert, one telephone line. Discussion focused on changing two connections, I would, should that be the connection? To alert system?
The connection, yes.
Okay. On the second page, about the fourth, well, probably the third bullet point down, under P&L trucking, he will pay for sings and their installation, that probably should be signs.
Well.
Maybe they sing, but, no, I think it'd be sign.
Yeah.
Okay.
Singing signs.
Which, oh, there it is.
Uh, yeah, you got her, in P&L trucking.
Yeah.
On seven, it's not a real problem, but we go down Kitter Hill, out on 121 East, it's Danny Taylor, Peter Durgan, who is doing a login, and Roberts, it's Jim Roberts, if you want a name.
Okay, I didn't have a name.
Yeah, Jim.
Okay.
Okay. And then, on number 10, on the last page, having to do with this guy, Rich Thompson, the deputy in his new duties as health officer, they will do so, I crossed it all, I'm not sure if it said home, J. Carpen, but I'm assuming it should be honor. J. Carpen at the vets gathering, November 9th.
They will, oh, they will, they will honor.
Honor.
They will honor.
Yes. That's what I got.
Are there any other?
That's enough.
If, maybe we need a motion to accept the corrected minutes of November 4th?
I'll, I'll make that motion, accept the corrected minutes of November 4th.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion or corrections? All in favor of the, approving the minutes of November 4th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, so the next one we're doing is?
Six.
The six, and the two there, right?
Oh, you do, you should do the hearing first.
Yes, do the hearing first.
Yeah, six o'clock, yeah.
Hearing.
Excuse me, excuse me.
We don't need the upstairs, do we?
No.
We need a chair for us, please.
No, no, no.
Okay, so we're going to do the hearing first. Do we have any additions or corrections to do?
I have, I have one.
Okay.
On the second page, under I, talking about the school being a Red Cross, it's one, two, three, four sentences down, it starts with a paragraph above, and go between the school and additionally, take, take out, which he serves as a certified Red Cross shelter.
Which, which serves.
Yeah, which serves.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I got.
Are there any additions, corrections? So, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the, of the public hearing on November 6th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion or corrections? If not, all in favor of the, of the corrected minutes of the public hearing, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, now we go to the regular meeting on the 6th. Do we have any additions or corrections?
I have, actually, the same one, under I, it's the same thing, it says the same.
Did I copy and paste, Richie?
Yeah, you did. Which serves as, which he serves as a Red Cross shelter.
Any other? So are no other corrections to the minutes of November 16th?
November 6th.
Of November 6th, I'm sorry, I need a motion to, motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
So moved.
I was wondering if there was, I tried to ignore it.
Chris, Chris made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, further discussion or corrections? If not, we need a motion to approve the minutes of November 6th, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, moving right along. Now we're on?
Fourteenth?
I think it's the 14th.
Over there.
Which is a special budget meeting. At the town hall, are there any additions, corrections to that?
I have one.
Okay.
Paragraph three, one, two, three, four sentence down, have a stipend for the position and work, the Shoal Report, probably should be school. Report budget item.
Oh, yeah.
Any other? You're taking over Alan's job today.
Hey, somebody had to do it.
We need a motion to accept the corrected minutes on November 14th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion or corrections? If not, say aye, if you approve.
Aye.
Negative? No? Okay. Now we go to the 18th. Which was a regular select board meeting. Do we have any corrections or additions there? Okay, if not?
Sorry.
It must understand.
If not, a motion to accept the minutes of November 18th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. If there are no further corrections, a motion, all in favor of approving November 18th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's done. And the last and final one, is November 25th. This is, was a special budget select board meeting, the second one, actually. Do we have any here, or did Bill get an A plus again?
Actually, I correct, I corrected this one, but you won't see it, because I corrected it when I, when I printed it off, so.
Cheating.
I did. So I won't tell you what to do.
Okay, so, if not, we need a motion to approve the minutes of November 25th?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving along, let's get to something else. The warrants were signed, presented and signed by the board, so they're?
They're right there.
They're, okay, they're here, they're not. And now, we have the highway report, but Danny's not here, so.
No, that's okay, just give it.
Just give it?
Well, you want to do the?
Oh, wait, oh, no, SS.
No, you got to do the contract.
Yeah, we have to do the contract.
We don't need the note, but we need the contract. For everybody to know, this, we're getting a second tank. And it's supposed to be for free.
For chloride.
For chloride, because Danny has extra left over, if he needs more, and, so, Bill has reviewed the contract, and I don't think we have any, any obligation, other than, no, I mean, we're not, we don't have to pay for the tank or anything, correct?
That's correct.
But we just, our obligation is? You have it for three years.
Is to buy the, the stuff from them.
Liquor.
Chloride. From them, for three years, which we do anyway.
Yeah, Danny, I think the last meeting, Danny said, it's a good product, and he likes it.
Here's, here's that, and I have your, I have your picture.
Out of curiosity, is that more material up there than there ever was, and is there any?
No, we didn't use that much last year for the roads, because it was, they weren't that dusty, I guess, so they have, they have excess, so they can't, they need the storage, so, they're going to give us a, a second tank for no charge, obviously, if we continue.
We're going to use it, right?
Hopefully.
My only question.
I noticed the roads are a little dusty recently. Yeah, well, the recent, once the tank, yeah, that's kind of a good question, Artie, because my house is getting full of dust, but, anyway, not now.
I, I have the, it's in the minutes of the 18th, if anybody's looking for this.
But, anyway, I, I can't find the original thing.
Well, I, it's, I have it in the minutes of the 18th. My only question, it sounds like a lot, and Danny's not here to justify it, is 12,000 gallons per year for three years, that just strikes me as a lot, and I've never really paid attention of how much they actually get, but, 12,000 gallons, I mean, that's two tractor-trailer loads, a tractor-trailer's give about 6,000 gallons.
Well, they use a lot in the winter.
They didn't use enough.
No, with the summer, I don't think they used enough. They, they didn't do as much, I guess.
Yeah, they do use it in the winter, but.
But the winter, they use a lot of it.
The biggest, the reason for the tank is that, he has, he has stuff left over, he didn't want to throw it out.
Right.
3,000 gallons, if he, if he has a couple hundred gallons, he puts it in the sand, and it all, then it absorbs in the sand, and that works, but, he didn't want to do it otherwise.
And my only question is, I just can't justify it, I mean, I don't know, it just, to me, 12,000 gallons a year, and that's for three years, we have to do this.
36,000 gallons.
To get that, that tank, and we have to, we have to be part of this program for three years, and then after three years, they may not.
I didn't.
The obligation is gone, and they'll just, we can just keep the tank.
I didn't ask him, but I could call him and ask him, I'm presuming that that's what he buys every year.
Yeah, I have no idea, Danny can't answer that question.
Do you know, or do we have the, do we have the?
Yeah, do you, do you have anything on that?
Didn't you say it was Christie's sense?
Susan, you want a chair?
Somebody may have to help me.
Yeah, innovative surface solutions.
All right, while she's doing that?
Yeah.
Why don't we?
It just seems like a lot to me.
Do we need, do we need, oh, no, we need, we need, Artie, Artie, the question came up, the fire ponds and the fire hydrants, a question came up, should we add them to the capital budget, because, Stan can explain what's happening in the fire pond, but the hydrants are getting older, and even though we have 25,000, the pipes are in the ground, what, 30 years, 40 years?
Well, 73.
So.
So however that works.
You know, there could be issues coming down the pipe, and, so, should we start, even if we only put a small amount in, or should we take the amount of 175,000 and put in 3,000 or 2,000, or whatever, for the hydrants this year? That was a question that came up with the budget.
My comment there would be, if you have a definite number that you think you should add, we could add it, but if you don't, I would say, take it from something else, where we have the?
Well, that's what I mean, yeah.
I would take some, either from, you know, the bridge program, which is 22,000, we'll have 22,000 there, and it's 4,000 for the year, I mean, put it to fire hydrants, or culverts, or whatever you want.
So, you're, you're suggesting we do have a line in the capital budget, rather than funding it this year through new?
I would say we should plan for it, yes.
We, we'll each create?
A line.
A line, yes.
Yes, for that.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, how much do you want to put in, of 175,000?
Well, that's, that would be up to, because we don't have a number right now, we're just trying.
If you don't have a number, I would suggest that in the next year, we figure that out, if we can, and then we can plan for it.
Because what it, I'm sorry, I'm going to?
Well, I just want to, we have a capital budget hearing, which is required by law, on the 16th. Kim and I were talking, since the capital budget has been, gone through the committee hearing, a public hearing, can they change it? And I would think they can change the capital budget at that 16th hearing, but whatever you are going to do, you have to do at that hearing, and then approve it after that hearing, okay, so, but I'm just, I just want you to understand that if you make a change to what he's presented now, it's got to be formally changed at the, at the meeting on the 16th, and then adopted by you after, in order to be then voted on at, at the town meeting, otherwise, otherwise, it's not valid to vote on at the town meeting. So you've, so you've got to go through that process, you can either leave it alone and change it next year, or go back to have the committee approve, capital budget committee approve a change to what they've already recommended, and then have that be what you recommend to the town plan, because right now, what you recommend to town plan is what you did, what you're ascending to this meeting, which is what you guys approved.
Right, but are you, are you saying that we should tonight, talk about it, and give them, and they change it on the hearing, or at the hearing, we change it?
At the hearing, you change it, or decide that you're going to, tonight, decide that you're going to wait and do it next year, because the other thing is, why wouldn't this brought up two months ago, when we were going through the, their hearings? Their hearings is when you should have brought it up.
The reason why it didn't come in is because we, when we had the budget, we were talking about this.
We talked on the line.
Stan brought up the subject of, of the fire pond, and, and the hydrants, and that's how it arrived.
I understand that, but the capital budget committee hearing to decide what's going to be in the capital budget was three or four weeks ago.
Yes, it was.
Again, again, my suggestion, I think, would be, is let's research it, and let's create it for next year, and start funding.
Well, we have, we have two, and, and both, both obviously are dealing with water, is the, well, this one is the, the pond, now, you got to remember, this was, this was installed in 1973, and there's two and a half million gallons of water sitting about 500 feet up, or, in elevator, or 200 feet higher than the village, about two and a half million gallons of water, that was put in, in 1973, and I know about 15 years ago, before I retired, the Wyndham Foundation always owned the hydrant system and maintained it, and I forget exactly the date, but at some point down the road, the town accepted the responsibility, and now owns the hydrant system, and at the time it was put in, if I remember the numbers, somewhere, it was somewhere around $250,000 to, to put that system in, so, $250,000 in '73 now is somewhat higher than that now, and I remember, like, 15 years ago, there's a big gate valve up there, that if something happened between the fire pond and below, a pipe broke, you could shut that gate valve off, and it didn't work well then.
Is anybody checking it now?
I don't think so.
I'm not.
This is what kind of problem?
And this, and exactly, and this is what, and also what we did, also what we did, we had, at some intervals, we had a diver, actually, go into the pond with, you know, scuba gear, and be able to look at the, what do you call the weir, or whatever it is, and the gate valve, and things, and make a determination what things look like, and, and my problem was, every time we go into the, to the budget cycle, we have hydrants, and we always just put zero, we never, we never have any money in the hydrant for, for repairs, and everybody said, well, we've got $25,000 sitting in the, the reserve account for it, and I understand that, but it's?
What reserve account is that?
It's a special account. It's a hydrant reserve account.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not part of the capital budget committee?
No, no, no.
The foundation gave, as I understand it?
$30,000.
30,000, and 25 is still left.
Well, it wouldn't have been, except that money didn't get transferred properly.
Yeah, that's true.
And whatever else, but anyway, that's, that's my thought with it, I think that, you know, we have a, a big asset, and we're not really paying attention to it, and I think that at some point, we're going to have to, to do something with it, so.
Well, I have a question, maybe it's a question for Kim, if you have this 25,000 in reserve account, can you move that into the capital budget, and put it in a line I just?
That's an account, of course, I would think you could.
You, you can, just it's locked into a CD right now, and getting?
The thing is, the capital budget committee accounts, we've decided our programs, which you guys can manipulate, but are not reserves.
No.
Reserves specifically have to address?
Right.
That one item that they're reserved for.
Good point.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So I'm not sure what the deal is with this fire hydrant.
Kim, no.
$30,000.
Specifically for the fire hydrants.
It's a reserve?
Yes.
And it created by the accountants as a reserve?
Yes.
Yes.
It is.
So it's not part of the capital budget?
No, no, not, not.
So then, as I understand, if Bill's correct, we don't have to, we, we take no action tonight, and at the hearing, if you want, or we can do something at the hearing? We can?
Well, I guess the question is, do you want to, or do you want to find out what you need to do, or what might be required, like, should we send a diver in again, to check this out?
Well, yeah.
Should we turn the valve and make sure it works? Should we do something?
Diver's code, nobody's better than me. It's a little frosty, I would imagine, but.
But, I mean, it's, it's a big asset, that, that probably nowadays, like I said, in '73, it was 250,000, that's got to be a $500,000 asset now, that the town owns, and other than repairing the immediate hydrants, which we have done, the, the rest of it is sort of, you know, sadly enough, it's out of sight, out of mind, when, at some point, we're going to have to do something with it.
Do they flush the hydrants?
The town does.
I mean, you know, you read in the paper, Brattleboro, the other towns, the sewer, the, the water lines are leaking, and whatever, after so many years, they, they don't last forever.
Well, it can bill as well, they had to replace the whole infrastructure downtown.
It seems to me that, from that very discussion, there's a good reason to put it off?
Yeah.
To next year, and let the capital budget look at it next year seriously, rather than just say?
The diver down there.
Yeah.
Because maybe we do have to replace that valve, because, God forbid, you do have, and you can't shut it off, although, what, what happened last time, when the school bus?
Oh, that was just, those are breakaway hydrants.
Yeah, but, how, how, how did the water get shut off?
Well, they're breakaway hydrant, they're meant to do that, you can, you could clean one of those hydrants, wind off, and it won't squirt.
So the only time is if the actual pipe busts.
Right.
Okay. All right, so, why don't we just, Bill, somewhere, put it in a tickle file or something that, come next spring, or next summer, we need to hire some guy to go down and look at it, and see if it actually is working. I guess you're, Rich, you're on for the budget.
Do we want to take, we got to go back to that chlorine?
Oh, that's right, yeah, the chlorine, yeah.
Yeah, when I looked at the accounts payable, it looked like in '17, we, these are deliveries, and we usually have two to three deliveries a year, with approximately 4,000 to 4,500 pounds per delivery.
So you use it then?
So in '17, we had two deliveries, '18, we did have three deliveries, and in '19, we only had two deliveries.
So it's, that's a?
So it's an average of between eight and 12.
Okay, so the 12,000, okay, that's fine then.
Okay, so should we have a motion to, to approve this?
Yes, and would you please authorize me to sign it?
Okay, so if somebody wanted to make that motion, or I can make it, that makes everything, we need a motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we authorize the contract with innovative surface solutions for them to supply a new chloride tank, based on the purchase of 12,000 gallons of chloride per year for three years. And then we, and then we keep the tank after that.
All right, Chris seconds it. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, Bill, you can sign it.
Bill can be the signing.
Yeah, all right, Richard, you're ready.
Well, we have copies of the proposed part of apartment budget, if anybody needs one, or maybe you already have one. This year, we're asking for, a little shy of $2,000 more in our operating budget, and if you go through each line, if you get the paper in front of you, the very far right-hand side.
Is this the same one with the November 20th?
I think, this is the same, I think, it says 23,000 here.
That's the same one, what's the date up here?
That's the same one as his.
Okay.
Do you need more copies, people?
No, I'll have it.
Yeah.
You get a different figure on yours, this is what Chappie sent me the other day.
Well, yeah, this isn't the right.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sorry about that, I thought you guys had?
That's the same, 23,850. That's fuzzy, but.
Can you read that?
But it's 23,850.
But you got to look at the last column, which is graft and support.
Yeah, the last column.
Is the column that you're looking at.
I don't think this one is right either.
Well, we'll, we'll get copies of, we're looking.
Yep.
Actually, it is. It is the same, I think, but, that's a, that's hard to read.
These are all, yeah, these are totally figures.
Well, I hope he gave me the right ones, I'm assuming he did.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, they are.
This is different.
Yes.
Well, that's what we're, yeah, that's what we're. This is the file on hold.
Well, it says 11/26, but I don't think he?
That is, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is different.
So if you look at the far right-hand column, that's what, just the graft and support is, and if you follow it down the ledger, that's what the money that taxpayers supply us, what individual line items, what they go for, the bottom line is, this year, we're asking for just our operating expenses, going up, $1,950 on our operating expense, and another $1,000 on our capital budget expense, and, other than that, I can go through each line item if you'd like me to, or if you have any questions, we can do it that way.
So you're asking this year, $27,950 for the town?
$950, yeah.
Right, and then 17,500 for the capital?
And how that was arrived, that Chappie and I, or Treasurer and I, went through it, then we had our executive meeting last week-ish, and we went through with the executive board, and this, these were the numbers that were determined, that seemed like a, a fair interpretation of what the executive board, and myself and Chappie felt, that is taxpayer responsibility versus fundraising responsibilities. Like I say, again, we can go through each line if you care to, or we can, yes, we pick out one, and I'll, should have an answer for you.
I think there was some discussion, I think, at the, one of the budget, about not doing anything for the capital budget until there was a better report.
We put in $15,000.
That was the increase.
We didn't put the increase in, did we?
No, we put in $15,000.
Yeah, we put in 15,000, because there was questions of, what, what are you going to do with the truck, what do we really need, and I, there was some discussion, Rich, about, I think that we need better information from the fire department on what their long-term goals are, and, that was, that was a discussion, and that's, I'm not saying we didn't say yes or no, that was, that's what happened.
I could tell you, historically, that truck, before my time, was slated to be, the the ladder truck was slated to be replaced in twenty-twenty-five. And my goal is try to get the fire department at a certain level that they would have some money to do something with. But there's so many variables there, what kind of condition that truck is going to be in in five or six years. And it's such a steep hurdle to replace that truck. Honestly, I don't think that it would be something that could be replaced solely by the taxpayer. So basically, what I'm trying to do is trying to get something in there to get started towards the goal of replacing that truck. If you're asking me for a firm schedule to replace it, right now, that replacement truck, bare bones on that replacement truck is a little over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the average fire truck goes up about three percent per year. So the bottom line is, if you're asking me for a firm figure to replace that ladder truck when it's full life, twenty-twenty-five, we'd have to start coming up with about a hundred thousand dollars per year. To me, I'm hoping there's more creative ways as a taxpayer to finance that, whether it be just some kind of available grant to us, number of years of fundraising, so on and so forth. The bottom line with the truck is the town does need to maintain a second pumper of some flavor to satisfy our ISO rating. So that's pretty much it in the nutshell. If you're asking me for a firm schedule of that ladder truck replacement and it's full life, that's what you're looking at. And I'm not expecting, I'm not expecting you to say, yeah, that sounds good, we'll start giving you a hundred thousand dollars a year. Believe me, I'm not expecting that.
I missed that number. What was that?
The replacement of that ladder truck in today's cost is a little over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And to replace a pumper? And to replace a pumper?
Probably around three-ish.
Three hundred thousand. And as we discussed before, the question is, what do we go for as a truck when the time comes? Six fifty for a ladder truck, three hundred thousand for a pumper?
Well, I guess my point is, if we shoot for that pumper, try to get as close to three hundred as we can, then as we get closer to the date that that needs to be replaced, that's when we really kick in and I start looking in the grants. There's a whole barrage of different things that we can possibly do to supplement. But one thing for sure, in my opinion, I don't think it's reasonable to think that we're gonna be able to fund it solely by grants. Or on the same token, I don't think it's reasonable to think we're gonna solely fund it by taxpayer funding. And I'm, at least until I'm fire chief, I'm not willing to say that we would replace that truck with just a pumper or a tank or something like, I mean, it's, it's, there's a valuable piece of equipment and I certainly would not turn my back on it. So, any questions about the capital budget or line items?
Well, I think that, I think.
Well, I can give you a little, basically, by the end of six thirty-two thousand twenty-one, the way it's being funded right now, you'll have a reserve of about a hundred and thirty-five thousand bucks. And if you go four more years, which is at least the life, that's got at least a four more year life, you'd have about two hundred and twelve thousand at that same fifteen thousand plus whatever they kick in. And they've been kicking in more than five thousand the last few years, which is what I'm estimating.
So in essence, you could probably fund.
Three hundred thousand.
For the pumper.
Within four, five, six years.
No, I think that's about what I had, yeah.
But not a ladder truck. I don't, there's any way, there's no way the town can fund six hundred thousand.
And that's what I say, though, a couple of years out, maybe we start doing fundraising. Maybe there's a FEMA grant available. We were successful this cycle with the FEMA grant. There are options at that point as we get closer.
There are ladder trucks in the area too. Right?
Well, there was one in Bellas Falls.
And one in Westminster.
Many of them close.
In Westminster.
Yeah. But I wouldn't want to be the guy on the third floor of the tavern when it's on fire waiting for Westminster to come. I think I'd rather have me and Robbie show up and start picking people out of the high windows.
Would that affect your ISO rating with a ladder?
I'd have to look at it closer. For some reason, I don't think that was written up that way. But I could be mistaken about that, but it definitely is written up with the second pumper. That helps our ISO rating tremendously. I would be surprised if it doesn't help the tavern out, the ladder truck. But I honestly don't know the answer to that, to be truthful.
And have you started the whole grant?
Yeah, I mean, you know, they don't, they're more of a medical thing. I mean, they've been more flexible the last few years with us. They actually gave us ten thousand dollars to buy some loose equipment on our new pumper two years ago, three years ago. For, could I get them again to maybe do fifteen thousand or something like that, possibly? But it would never be the kind of money that we're talking about solely.
I think, if I could say this correctly, that I think the capital budget left a fifteen thousand in there so far in total. So you have to fight for the.
Fifteen thousand is in there right now.
Well, you know, I mean, it's one of the things that put a little bit aside now and make the pain a little bit less in five or six years. And we hadn't asked for an increase in the number of years, I guess last year, we asked for it, it didn't go through. I thought it was more of a housekeeping, not housekeeping is probably the wrong word, but a typographical error when I thought that's how it was explained to me, but I could be wrong. Kim probably remembers more about it than, because there was a discrepancy last year about it, why it didn't go through. I thought it was because the information got screwed up more than it got refused, but I could be.
I was gonna say, I think you're still getting the twenty-seven five this year.
As far as.
For the operating budget.
For the operating.
Yeah.
And you would, you still get the same amount for the truck.
Which is fifteen.
Right.
Yeah, you get your increase.
None of that has changed.
You get your increase for the operating expenses, but not the budget. And part of the reason, and speak up if you don't agree, is that we went from a hundred and forty-five thousand to a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
One fifty.
One fifty to one seventy-five.
One forty-nine, actually.
Yeah. Because we were facing a four hundred thousand dollar bridge replacement. And besides that, with the school taxes, the way they are, and there were some unexpected increases we had with NEMRAC, which is a five thousand dollar hit, we're trying to keep the taxes down, you know, for the poor people who are gonna get hit, whom God already got hit with the school, and so. But we have to increase the capital budget, because the bridge is a reality. And so, so that's why, I think that's the reason why, but speak.
I really don't want to. I want to, but I don't feel as though I should. I'm too close to it.
No, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, I'd like to hear it, Stan.
Well, I mean, you talk about, and you know, the bridge is a reality, and it absolutely is, but I mean, at some point, this is gonna become a reality too. And, you know, unless you're preparing for the realities, you know, we do seem to, you know, increase the amount for the highway trucks and the loader and the grader or whatever, and they're all spaced out where they should be. And I'm not suggesting, and I agree, that there should be a better program in there to probably justify the amount. But one of the reasons for the ladder truck actually just down in Townsend Road just a couple of days ago, I mean, to get to a chimney fire nowadays is, if you had a chimney fire at the tavern, there is no way you could bring, you'd literally have to wait the twenty or, you know, twenty half hour, whatever it is, for Westminster or whatever to get here.
Right.
And we can hit, even with the seventy-five foot, the ladder that's on there is a seventy-five foot, we can get to those chimneys or the second floor or the third floor, you know, from the road. And that was the rationale to buying this thing in the first place, because getting people to do this stuff is getting harder and harder every time. And if you take this piece of equipment that at least lessens their load to a point of trying to throw up a thirty-five foot hand, well, we don't even use a thirty-five foot.
No, we don't even care.
It takes five people to put up a thirty-five foot hand ladder nowadays. We could put up a seventy-five foot ladder with one person.
And again, I mean, if you're doing a rescue, even chimney fires aside, I mean, you lose a building, you know.
Rich is absolutely right, that the ISO rating is huge. And you can do it with a pumper, but the ladder truck is a quad. It's a ladder, it carries water, it's got a pump on it, and it can do multiple things. That's not just a ladder on a chassis, so. I would like to, I would suggest, and again, I would want somebody else to do it, but I would suggest that we go with the seventeen-five, but I would like somebody else to make that suggestion rather than me.
Bill?
Wonder what the Wind foundation would be willing to chip in every year to make sure that we can replace a ladder with a ladder, because it's got to affect their insurance.
We've talked about that somewhere along the way.
It has to, so I mean, somebody ought to go talk to them, and they find out.
We've talked to them.
It is, because I would think that their insurance company, for all the reasons you guys said, both the rescue and cut out a chimney fire.
Might be a little bad time, right, though, the way I've been here.
It doesn't matter if they use that building.
Oh, no, I understand, sure.
And in five years, if you don't get that truck, what's their insurance gonna cost?
Like I said, I don't know personally the information, what they got going, but I would suspect it would go up.
I think they should be asked.
But what the capital budget committee has wanted is a plan here, okay? We need a real plan with concrete numbers, like when is this ladder truck gonna disappear from the scene? And then, if we're gonna go with the ladder truck, how are we gonna get there? And that involves the whole community, which would include the Wind and Foundation, in my mind.
See, I agree with Stan, that, but the problem is seventeen-five for six hundred thousand dollars is not gonna get you even close to it. And so, why, I mean, if you really want to do it right, then you need to put fifteen, another fifteen thousand, put thirty thousand to get to the six hundred thousand. The only thing, the only increase is gonna make you feel good, but it's not gonna get you a ladder truck.
Well, it's just that when, as we get closer to it, I mean, again, I mean, I'll use the SCBA replacement for an example. We knew we were facing it, and we didn't have the money to do it. And it took a couple of years and a couple of tries, but we were able to fund that through a FEMA grant. And as we get closer to this, I mean, I can't give you hard numbers on something. I really don't know what the reality would be, you know, four, five, or six years down the road. Would we be successful with the FEMA grant at that point? I mean, I'm not sure. But it's certainly something you can't count on. But one thing for sure, I mean, they wouldn't fund the whole thing.
One of the things that a lot of grants look for, and this is kind of across the board, is they look at what, be it community support.
They certainly do.
Is kicking in, I mean, if everybody assumes you're gonna get seven hundred thousand dollars from the government or from FEMA, and the community doesn't support it, they're gonna look at it and say, oh, you just want our money, because you don't want to spend your money. So they want to look at, you know, what is the support from the community to help this project along? And if you show that you're increasing your amount on a yearly basis, they're gonna look at that and say, okay, at least you're trying to support your project. Now, we can support it a little bit, you know, a little bit.
And that's exactly how the grant that we have active now through them with the SCBA replacement, we were fortunate enough to get a sizable grant from a private donation that covered the shortfall of what the SCBA with the FEMA grant didn't cover. So, I mean, that's exactly how it works. No, I mean, we're planning on having a lot of spaghetti dinners, you know, or whatever, you know.
Have a lot of spaghetti dinners for three hundred thousand dollars.
It's, the numbers are unbelievable. I mean, you know, and again, I mean, when the time comes, as we get closer, I mean, maybe some used piece of equipment would roll around that's only five years old or something, that we can get any five years from or. When, you know, I mean, I honestly, I'm just grasping at straws at this point, but I mean, there's, there might be something creative coming down the pipe like that, that could happen. I mean, I'm not intentionally trying to be vague, it's just I really don't have, I really don't have the answers.
One of the things with that truck, we were fortunate, and I say fortunate, it was still expensive, but we were able to buy that truck for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We did that because the ladder, the pump, and the whole backend of that truck came off a used piece of equipment from St. Louis. So the only thing that was new on that truck when we got it was the chassis itself, the freight liner chassis. Everything else was used and refurbished, so a third or a quarter or a half of that truck is already built in nineteen eighty-three or something to that effect, eighty-six or whatever it was. And that was put on that truck used.
And we've dumped in the last.
And to maintain it, it's expensive.
Six or seven years, we've dumped fifty or sixty thousand dollars into that truck too, about fifty.
I'd like to call the question on this, or if we're doing.
Well, then, somebody make a motion.
Well, I think this goes back to the budget committee meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, just.
This is only a record.
Just end the discussion, so.
Right.
So, Rich, we will have this discussion again, I guess, on the twelve, for the final budget. But I do have a question.
Yep.
What is seven thousand dollar air pack, what does pending mean?
Let's see which one you're talking about. Oh, that's the air packs, those from a private.
What is pending?
The air packs are on order, we just haven't received them yet.
Oh, okay.
And once we receive them, then we have to pay for them.
Okay, I just didn't know what pending meant. I know what the air pack is, I didn't know what pending.
Yeah, that's Chappie's little self no to himself.
So do you not show your revenue at all because of, why, like, when it comes to any donations, you don't anticipate or estimate a donation or auxiliary?
He will. This is just for our consumption. This is just showing the actual numbers of what is taxpayer-funded. But yes, he will at the town report with the full budget.
And where it is that, you know, the auxiliary money and the donations.
Equipment, uh.
Turnout gear.
Turnout gear, equipment.
I have a question. Looking down the revenue, we got a hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty-one, and we got eighty-six thousand expenses, which means we had a profit of twenty-seven thousand five seventy-five. What do we do with that?
It gets, like I say, it gets eaten up.
Back maybe?
Some of it does. I mean, we're, at this point, we're trying to put a little bit aside so we can start putting some major maintenance that we have.
No towards our truck fund?
Can we?
We do that.
Put some of that money in there, like twenty-seven, twenty-five?
We do that at the end of the year, what we're comfortable with, to, that we feel that we, that we wouldn't need. But I mean, we got some pretty heavy-duty maintenance issues with the building itself that we are gonna be addressing, so we are trying to run it kind of lean at this point. And we're hoping we're gonna have something to start doing some work to that building this spring.
In general, the fall foliage sale, there's usually five thousand dollars of that profit goes in back into the ladder truck, into the truck fund.
If we got twenty-seven thousand profit this past year, what did we have the year before? What do we have, what are we building up to? What do we have in the bank? And, you know, that doesn't show here.
I would have to check with Chappie. I don't think there's too much more than that in our checking account.
Well, maybe you guys could give us for the next meeting, some of the, you know, the money raised, so we would have the revenue numbers, because we don't have the revenue numbers.
The grant that you guys just got, what was that, just towards, is that part of the apparatus of the auxiliary and the donation?
Yeah, that's just for the replacement of our air packs. It was sixty-five thousand dollars, I think it was. And then that can't be spent for anything else other than just that. And again, why we wrote it up like this, how this started two or three years ago, we were funding so much of the budget with the sweat of our volunteers back. We broke off a lot of, broke out a lot of the expenses to just the true operational expenses, bare bones, keep the lights on, operating expenses of that fire department to get it going, to keep it going. Some years are better than others with fundraising and everything else. If you have, if you strip the fire department out of all its assets, then all of a sudden, you do have a bad fundraising years, are you gonna close out the doors? You're not paying the electrical bill? I mean, I don't think so. Or am I gonna come to the town and say, I need a couple, a hundred bucks to pay the electrical bill? I mean, that's ridiculous. So these are a true interpretation of bare bones. So, these are a true interpretation of bare bones of what it costs to run that fire department. And in my opinion, that is a taxpayer obligation. And anything else the auxiliary can raise off the sweat of their back, I mean, they, you know, they do their fundraising and, you know, when I have to go up to them and say, "I need a new set of gear for somebody," and they, I say, "I need four thousand dollars," and we transfer the money over, and that's how it works, or has been working.
I have one question, the compensation.
Yep.
I mean, is that what you had just developed over the last couple of years?
Yeah, it was last year or this year. We now compensate our line officers with a small stipend at the end of each year.
But, I mean, I'm not saying they don't deserve it, because they certainly do, but it really wouldn't go into the bare bones of the lights and all of the maintenance.
I felt it was, that's why I put that in there. I felt, again, that, and I'm speaking as a taxpayer, that even if I wasn't fire chief, I think the fire chief deserves to get something from the taxpayers to, so it doesn't cost him money to participate at the end of the year. And in my view, that was a taxpayer expense, not an auxiliary expense or a expense from a private donor.
I'm just wondering how that won't affect our workers' comp? Didn't we check into that or did we not?
No, it was, I forgot what the threshold was, but we, it was very much lower. And I don't have, I don't honestly remember the figure.
Do we have anything else of Rich?
Keep me up now, I'm sitting there.
Yep. Okay. I guess, I guess thank you for the report, and we'll have this final budget meeting-
We have another budget.
And decide what's gonna go.
That's good, thank you.
And we'll go from there.
Thanks, Rich.
Personal public policy amendment.
Personal policy, I sent all that to you guys today. I don't have it in front of me, so you have it. And basically, what it allows you to do is what we've been doing for the last three years, and that is not include someone who is a young whippersnapper like me on the town insurance plan, but does the Medigap type supplement with Medicare. And this allows you to do it. And you're allowed to do it if you have less than twenty employees. If you have more than twenty employees, you'd have to keep me on your line.
So, you're looking for an amendment to the program policy?
Yeah, as I sent to you guys last week.
Is this the amended?
Yeah.
This is the amended?
To insert that as the-
It was in the old policy, and I discovered that it's no longer in the new policy.
Then we need to approve it.
Yeah.
And we talked to VLSD, and they said, "Yes, that should be in there."
So, does somebody wanna make a motion to add it back into the policy that was taken out? I'll speak to one.
So moved.
I, second.
But, good, you got a question, go ahead.
No, no, it's gonna just reverse.
Any further discussion, all in favor of putting the amendment back, this amendment back into the town plan? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's in the town personal policy.
I mean, the personal policy, sorry.
No more town plans.
Still on my bike. Let's go talk about town plan, okay? Do we have any public comment?
We have an issue that has to be addressed by the listers.
There's two issues. One, I gave to Chris for the minutes of the last meeting, and they have, they have a business issue that needs to be handled down. Is this the one?
Yeah.
What, is this the one?
That's the minutes.
I was the minutes to the special town meeting. Wendy did it up, and I could just get signatures so I can report that.
Everyone signs or just the chair?
Just the chair or the clerk, whichever.
Well, you're the clerk, why don't you, well, it says selectmen, does that make a difference?
Doesn't make a difference.
You're the clerk, why don't you sign it?
What is that for?
In pen.
Here, in pen.
What is these saying?
The minutes of the town meeting.
I have no signatures on that, I don't need anymore. They come after you. Okay, what's the other thing?
Okay, the listers, once a year, the listers file with the select board any errors or omissions they've made to the grand list for the year, and we have to do this and get your signatures by the end of December. And there was one error that I made when we transferred the trey hand land to the town. I neglected to choose the non-taxable part in the program. So, it went on taxes. The property is valued at ninety-four hundred dollars, and by changing it to non-taxable, we figured out today that, November fifth, I made the change. The taxes were, can you explain about the taxes that we're ending up not having to evade it?
When you did the reversal to make it a non-taxable, it automatically took it off of the late payment of not paying a tax bill, because it generated a tax bill. And without paying, and town graph design paid it, it showed interest also. But when she reversed it on the fifth, it then cleared it out, those payments, and then it left the interest. I went in, and because it was a small dollar amount and there was a reason for it, I could reverse out the eighty-nine cents interest. No need to have a debate.
You have a lot of authority.
We don't have to get evil together.
So, bottom line is-
Donate it to the fire department.
We just need, right, we just need the signatures of, like, we're three, three of the select board people anyway.
And then it goes to two.
And it files with Kim at the end of the grand list, and the problem is solved. Huge problem.
Sounds like you would be six sigmat.
Just like my twenty sets on the taxes, but I don't-
Due diligence for something.
Do we have anything else?
Was that public comment?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, that was his public. Do we have any public comment other than what we're doing now? No, okay. The date of the next meeting is the-
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth?
Regular.
Regular meeting, the budget's on twelfth, and there's the town plan on the twelfth. Right, okay.
Six P M, town garage, right?
Yes, and the town plan is at the town garage, or we don't know?
Town plan is at the town garage.
Okay.
For good or for worse, it's at the town garage.
And what's the date of that?
The twelfth.
The twelfth.
And the next budget meeting is the twelfth, and the regular select board meeting is the sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Where's the budget meeting?
It'd be upstairs at ten.
Yeah.
Nine o'clock?
Yeah.
About ten A M. And the sixteenth is, and the twelfth at six P M, right? At the garage for the town plan.
That is, should be the final hearing, and it should be a meeting right after that for you to take action or not take action, depending what you do with the meeting.
Thank you.
Bill, isn't there a budget component on twelve sixteen also? Isn't there a capital budget component to twelve sixteen?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, okay.
Yeah, but that's what'd be done prior to the-
Their public hearing before the-
Before the select board, yeah.
Okay, so that's prior to the-
Yeah, five forty-five.
It's the same time, separate, though.
Yeah.
Certainly, one's a hearing and one's-
That's gonna be on the sixteenth?
Mm-hmm.
Probably do that ahead of time.
Five forty-five?
Five forty-five.
Yeah, and then we do it, we can ask the rest. Because it looks like we're all to do that.
That work?
Yeah.
Party? Five forty-five.
No, or yes?
Yeah, fine with me, I'll make my time available as a retiree.
Okay, are we still going to the second session, Bill, or is that?
No.
Unless you wanna, no. Let me just say what it was gonna kind of be about, and that was, I made a big effort to see if we, no matter what happens on the twelfth, whether or not we could get a way to have, well, on the twelfth, you either approve the plan or it is, and pass it on, even if that's free to do, but it's gotta be passed on to the town meeting, which will be on the thirteenth, or it is dead. Okay, so that's what's happening on the twelfth. I tried to figure out some way to put another hearing in between there, in case you guys changed it, you could have another hearing and send it, but with, between attorney and John Bennett and I went over about twenty scenarios, and none of them worked. So, no, it's either done on the twelfth, passed on to the election on the thirteenth, or it's dead on the twelfth, one of the two. It's up to the select board.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.